Councilmember Bacon proposed changes based on what I submitted. And it's very orderly and easy to follow. Thank you. Councilmember Bacon with the redlining and so forth. And I mean, what would typically happen with a legislative body is you'd put the main motion in, the main resolution, and then Councilmember Bacon would be allowed to offer her amendment to that. And you would vote separately on the amendment. If the amendment carries, then you vote on the resolution as amended. If the resolution does not carry, then you vote on the resolution without the amendment, as it was originally submitted. If that's acceptable to the members of the council, that would be the way that I would recommend it. That way, everybody gets a fair change of what they want.
So it should be a motion, for instance, as initially presented?
Mm-hmm. You would just move the resolution, it's the same resolution that was before you last time.
Right, so, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented last time.
Second.
Okay. Motion made, and second. Discussion regarding the resolution that we've had before us now for a couple of months. And specifically, we've had it for the, since the last town council meeting, which was three weeks ago, January 22nd. Now, I was prepared then, as I am tonight, to pass it as-is. It's something that we want to clarify, and this does, ratify, and everything else, make it permanent. I know the town manager, you're comfortable with what came before us two months ago. Mr. Gorm, you're the town solicitor, and I asked you last week, which was, what, three weeks ago, last meeting, does it do what we need to be done? To ratify, to clarify, and to verify. And the answer, I think, was yes, yes, yes. Now, personally, I think, I asked, had there been any information sent? And this was last Tuesday, and the answer was no, up to Tuesday. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anything, email or otherwise, came to us until Friday morning, the ninth? That's the email I read. All right? Packages went out and done, and we certainly have plenty of time to make comments, if anybody chose to, versus tonight, reading these one by one and saying yea or nay. You know, I think, personally, I think we could pass it tonight, the way it is, the way it has been the last two months, the way it should be, and then, down the line, whenever the audit comes back, whatever they recommend to change, to alter, it can be changed down the line. By us, with one person's, I suppose, input, to change it all tonight, before, what this does the job, at least temporarily, while the audit is going on, while the moratorium is held, and then, what can be changed later, what is recommended to be changed later, financially, bodies, people, personnel, numbers, that can be done, I think, after the, to me, common sense would, find out what the experts are recommending, before we start picking and choosing and going on one-to-one. That's my personal opinion. Now, I don't know how the majority or the other council people want to address this, but I had to say that, because the way we had it two months ago, with the one minor change, I was okay with. Even last month, I'm definitely okay with. Three weeks ago, we tabled it to pass it tonight. If the other members are comfortable with going line by line, I'll go along for the process. I don't know if anybody else has any comments outside of Councilwoman Bacon, who's put this together as of Friday morning. And I apologize, I'm very busy with the family up from Virginia. I don't go on my emails hourly, or daily, for that matter, and nor did I decide to review this, make changes, make comments, or anything else. So I don't think tonight is the night to do it, personally. I think, personally, I think we should pass what has been overdue, and then, down the line, when we get some expert opinions, some expert, you know, studies, some recommendations, I think that would be the time to maybe, you know, fine-tune it, to however you want to change it beyond what needs to be done, and this needs to be done. Anyone else want to comment? Or do we, are you comfortable with?
Bacon, Michael.
Well, I understand, but anyone other than the one that makes the changes on February 9th? Okay, Mrs. Bacon, I guess, or Mrs. Carlson.
Well, I reviewed Mrs. Bacon's proposed amendments to the resolution. I personally think that the sewer subcommittee doesn't work right now the way it should. I think we should, as I've said at other meetings, disband and reorganize it. My feeling is, yes, if we have to leave two councilmembers on the sewer subcommittee, they should be non-voting. I think we need an attorney, we need financial advisory at the meetings. I don't think it's a committee that's been really closely followed over the years, and that's why we have part of the issues we have now. We don't generally get a whole lot of reports from them, if ever. In the five years I've been on the council, I don't remember ever having, well, no, I take that back. Glenn Skirka has been here when we've had to vote on changes to the sewer ordinances, ordinance, rather. So I think I'm in favor of listening to Mrs. Bacon's suggestions, because she did a lot of work on this, and quite honestly, I think she's got some excellent ideas in here, and it's time for a change, and I don't think we need to wait for Citron Cooperman to come back and tell us how to organize a committee. We need to be able to do that ourselves. This is part of our job.
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else to the comments?
Just to be clear for the record, I think, Councilmember Bacon should offer her amendment, which hasn't been done yet. I know you were speaking of it as if it had been offered, but it hasn't been offered.
Do you want to make a motion to amend?
If you want to amend the proposed resolution, yes, you should make a motion to amend it with your amendment, which we've talked about.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. Second.
Okay, motion, no, we had a motion in the original, the second.
Yes, motion to amend.
To amend, okay.
And then the second.
And the second, all right. Discussion, all right.
Well, I would like for you all to look at this. I mean, this is going to, in my opinion, it will definitely bring some accountability to the sewer subcommittee, especially having monthly reports, financial reports, you know, to oversee and review the billing, just a couple of them. I mean, I would really hope that you would, you would look at this, given the state that our sewer program is in, and the sewer subcommittee, I mean, the sewer subcommittee, one of the big things is they need to start coming before the council. I would really hope, you know, I made the suggestions that, let's see, I'm sorry, that we have seven voting members, and I, the membership shall consist of the finance director, town tax collector, town department of public works, town engineer, town planning director. The town council shall appoint two qualified electors of the town of Coventry, one that will reside in a dwelling unit not serviced by a municipal sewer, and one that resides in a dwelling unit that, which is serviced by the sewer system established by the town. Each appointment is for two-year and shall be limited to serving not more than two successive terms. Terms of office are set up on staggered bases. Two councilmembers may be appointed by a majority vote of the council as liaisons, but not as voting members. They shall serve two years. Do you want me to continue with?
Well, the, it's up to you. Are you asking?
I, yeah, I'm asking you. Continue.
The, you can read it, or it's up to you, it's your, it's your motion.
I mean, if you want, I'll read everything in blue.
It's up to you.
Do you want me to start from the beginning?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd love to hear it.
Okay. Be it resolved, the Coventry Town Council shall serve as the Coventry Sewer Commission. I also added further down, you all have this, right, sitting here? Okay. Two members of the Coventry Town Council appointed by the Town Council President, five. I'm just reading my additions in blue. I already read that one paragraph. Whereas all members of the sewer subcommittee shall be required to follow the Code of Ethics set forth by the Code, by Rhode Island Code of Ethics, including the mandatory filing of the yearly financial statement of the Rhode Island Code of Ethics, under which they have six, I put no member. Following page, it's underwear, it says seven, it said, I changed it to four members, added sewer to the sewer subcommittee. Be it further resolved, this one, I mean, I just did it as suggestions, but I was, I started amending the rules and procedures. I rewrote, and I put, be it further resolved, that the Coventry Sewer Subcommittee shall be charged with the following responsibilities, duties, and assignments. All sewer contract awards, change orders must come before Town Council for approval, and must provide the Town Council with the following documents. One, copy of the entire bid slash contract and envelope. The envelope must be timestamped with the electronic date and time by the official time clock for the receiving and stamping located in Coventry Town Hall. Two, boring reports. Three, engineering reports. Four, availability of funds, and five, a report on the financial condition of the sewer fund. B, elect a chairperson and vice-chairperson annually. C, process review and must make written recommendations monthly to the Town Council relative to all abatements, assessments, sewer usage rates, sewer tie-ins, change orders, deferments, construction status update, and building sewer installation permits. D, oversee and review records of billings, income, and expenditures at least quarterly, information appearing on sewer usage assessment bills, format of forms being used by sewer subcommittee, and any other forms being used by the sewer commission. E, must provide and present an annual budget in February to the Town Council, an annual budget established for expense accounts, administration budget, operations and maintenance budget, sewer debt, sewer construction, and any other sewer accounts established by the town. Review and discuss any sewer-related projects and issues. Review and discuss the intermunicipal agreement with West Warwick. Provide an updated service area map. F, the Department of Public Works and the sewer subcommittee must make every effort to coordinate the sewer program with the townwide paving program and other roadway projects to ensure the most cost-effective results. G, water and sewer rate study must be performed, and that could be for discussion, I don't know, is it two, three, five years? H, sewer subcommittee must meet at least once per month. Must provide and present a written monthly budget to actual summary reports for each sewer expenditure account and revenue accounts, and the financial condition of the sewer fund to the Town Council. Must provide the Town Council with construction status update, including a copy of agreed-upon work schedule, potential change orders, engineering slash contractor concerns with the project. Those are my changes that I proposed.
May I ask one question, Mr. President?
Yeah, sure.
Just for clarification. On the, the fifth, on the fifth page of the proposed amendment, the word "or" is big and highlighted.
Yes.
As if you could choose, but you could vote on this as one whole document, could you not?
Well, the ones before.
Can you explain what the order is?
Yes, I'm sorry, because, I mean, this was just, you wanted everything in writing, so I just did my suggestions. I didn't realize you wanted a formal, you wanted it so formal. So, right before, where it says "eight," be it further resolved, that basically is the same thing as under the "or." I just rewrote it, and just kind of cleaned it up a little. These were just my.
So you're proposing it, so if we took, if you took the word "or" out.
Yeah.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't this reflect what you really want to propose?
Exactly, but some of this is redundant right above, that's all. I mean, I thought this was for discussion. I mean, these were just my thoughts, and I figured this would be, as we were talking about, a work in progress, and we would discuss this tonight. So if you look under where it says, right above, all of those, where under the eight, it's just basically the same.
Which page are you talking about?
The one before. It's, see, it says, sewer subcommittee shall be charged with the following responsibility, duties, and assignments. I mean, if it, I would just redline that entire thing, and just do the "or."
All right, well, just for clarification, so we know what's being voted on. I think it would be helpful if you chose, so it looks like you are breaking it into two separate suggestions.
Okay, so how about, so I would redline all of "eight," this entire thing, just, X that.
So you'd offer as an amendment, right up to the word "or," is that right?
I would remove where it's, see this, where it says "eight"? I would redline that, all the way to here, and I would, all of this, after the "or."
Okay.
After the "or."
All right, as long as the council understands that. Does everyone understand what the proposal is?
Yes.
So you would, you would cross out everything after the first "be it further resolved," up to the second "be it further resolved," is that right?
Yes.
Which is about a page and a quarter removed.
Yes.
Okay.
We're just talking. Yeah, he knows that, well, this right here, it's just redundant.
State it again.
Oh, we're not talking about the first one, just that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could, just, actually, actually, we have done, sewer subcommittee shall be required to follow code of ethics, they do, they do already have a code of ethics to follow, the Wayans Committee has to follow.
But at this time, they don't have to file the financial, and I think that should be a requirement, given these projects. I mean, I think we should. So they do follow the code of ethics, but however, they don't, they're not, right now, filing their financials.
Because they're not elected officials.
The only thing I would point out is that the Ethics Commission has, in my opinion, the preemptive authority to determine who must file with them and what. In other words, we don't get to say, as a town, who is and is not subject to the Code of Ethics, and if they are, what they must file. That is up to the Ethics Commission.
Okay, so could, I know the, the planning commission, they file.
Actually, actually, an article in the Rhode Island Constitution.
Could, so, okay.
Establishing them as almost like a fourth branch of government. So I think it's unrealistic to say that simply because this ordinance is going to say that they must file, that, that may not be the way the Ethics Commission sees it.
Then could we reach out? I mean, we have our.
Just like if we said, if we didn't say that they had to file, that would not, that would not exonerate them from filing, if the Ethics Commission said, you have to file. It's up to the Ethics Commission.
Could we reach out to the Ethics Commission? I mean, our planning, our planning commission, those board members, they filed financials, correct?
But that's because the Ethics Commission has determined that they must.
Determine, so that's what I'm asking. Can the town of Coventry reach out to the Ethics Commission and ask them, do, are they required to file a financial statement?
Well, of course, the town could do anything like that.
So I think, let's, we should, we should look into that.
All right, but we're talking tonight about the amendments.
Okay, but I mean, well, why don't we leave it in here, and if for some reason we need to remove it, at least we have it in there, and if it's redundant and they have to file, then it's just redundant.
It's your amendment, if you want to leave it in.
I would say, leave it in there.
I was asked a question, and I tried to answer.
Please, yes, I'd like to.
Just a couple of other points, I appreciate the work you put into it, the, there is a lot of work put into it, but I kind of feel like, same as Glenn, you know, we do have an audit coming up, we do have a solicitor that was well capable, we put together a good ordinance at this time. I think it's jumping the gun before, if we just adopt the ordinance that our solicitor put together, and if changes need to be done, as per advice from "or," we could always do that. But a lot of these are done already, in other words, you have here, be it further resolved, the entire bid package, contract envelope, it must be timestamped, electronic, it already is. The bids are open at a meeting, a bid open meeting, when, when all the contractors show up, it's timestamped, it's, it's not done at the sewer subcommittee, you know, level. So I don't think there's any need for that. I said before, I've been on the sewer subcommittee for eight years, and it's, it's an advisory committee. We really don't, you have on here that we want, you want to have the finance director, and the public works director, and the, I don't know exactly who else, but we don't make the financial decisions, illegal, illegal, as I said, a lawyer should be there. Everything goes through our solicitor before it goes through Town Council. We make an advisory, advice to the Town Council, it goes through our solicitor, any financial decisions go through our finance department, we don't spend the money on it, we're strictly an advisory committee, so, you know, we don't spend the money. The sewer subcommittee doesn't, they don't have that much responsibility. We have the contracts, we work with Wes and Sam, we work with our engineers, but we do not, you know, make those decisions without consulting with our finance director or our legal attorney already, so, and that's all I have on that. I mean, I see you put a lot of work into it, but I just think it's a jump in the gun a little bit, and I think we're better off to wait and, you know, adopt the one that our solicitor was well capable, but he put together a good one, and then, if we need to make changes after our audit comes back, I think that would be the time. That's just my opinion, all right?
All right, go ahead, then.
So, from what you all are saying, we're expecting Citron Cooperman to come back to us and say, you have to reorganize your sewer subcommittee, or it's just peachy keen and we're going to leave it the way it is? I don't know, I don't know what gets in there.
We have an ordinance right here that our solicitor put together, which is fine, it covers all aspects of it. Now, if they happen to come back and give us some other suggestions, then, you know, we can look at them. But they're not running the town, we have one in the town, and our solicitor put together an ordinance that's fine, in my eyes.
Well, Carrie, I understand that, but there have been instances, with our ordinances, I won't go into which ones, that really didn't do well by the, by the residents, the taxpayers. I'm not going to get into specifics, but, so, I don't understand the, the issue of not improving the transparency and the responsibility of the sewer subcommittee. I mean, I think, you know, when you look at our committees, you've got planning, zoning, and I'm thinking right now, sewer subcommittee may well be the most, the third most important committee we have in town.
Our ordinance drafted by our solicitor does address.
But our solicitor, you know, I, no offense, Mr. Solicitor.
Their ordinance was hard.
Nick, you know, I love you, honey, but, you know, he didn't write this ordinance. Wasn't this in place before you came along? Is this brand new that you wrote?
My task was to simply clarify a couple of ambiguities in the ordinance. It was not a long-term fix, it was just.
There you go.
So now we're open to new ideas.
Because we weren't following, we weren't following it to begin with, that was the problem.
Transparency and getting it done right.
I said what I, I mean, I, I did what I was asked to do. There were probably discrepancies, and I fixed them.
I really urge you, this is something that this town needs, I mean, we need this. Our sewer subcommittee, obviously, look at the, look at the financial condition, look at what has happened with the sewer project. I really, I strongly urge you to please vote for this and put this forward, and reorganize our sewer subcommittee, have strong accountability going forward. Please, I urge you to do this.
So do we.
Yeah! Much, much better. Again, I think you've done a lot of work, I know you've done a lot of work, you've given a lot of thought. Major concerns I have is that you're changing the membership, shall, you get your town, all these are full-time town employees, they're going to be giving extra tasks on a monthly, or if not more so, finance director, town tax collector, the public works director, and they all have a part in the game, for sure, or the project, I should say.
Those are our experts, though.
I'm speaking, thank you.
I know, but you like experts. Those are our experts.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah! You give it to them!
As I was saying before, semi-interruptioned.
Right, witness movement.
The town finance director, the town tax collector, the public works director, the town engineer, the planning director, all full-time, and they shall. Maybe it will be recommended that they should, or want, or two, or three beyond it. I think that's coming attractions, I think it's waiting to find out, as Councilman McGee said, see what they recommend, see if, what's the economic cost on this? Mr. Waters, I have a question, economic cost on this, if in fact, any of it passed. This, this could be very, very expensive, when possibly.
The sewer thing, you don't sound expensive.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I agree with her.
I mean, the sewer project's very expensive.
To have full-timers there, you know, more than their, I know they're on salary, but actually, to be there, to do the work, et cetera, it may be, you know, it may be, you know, feasible, and it may not. It might be just the sewer subcommittee asking these individual questions at a particular time, on a particular meeting, and again, instead of saddling them and making it mandatory, I think we should wait. I'm not saying we shouldn't change the sewer subcommittee, it's been here for a long time before, all of us, and.
And it's a shame.
Right, so what I'm saying is that, to clarify it, to ratify it, to legalize it the way it should be done, it's put in front of us now, it's ready to be voted on. Any additional changes can be discussed, either between the councilpeople, the planning, the town manager, the audit, the results, and then, you know, it's not like it's never going to be done, it's a moratorium already till June, and then, we get recommended changes, we can put them in, instead of getting this on Friday morning, the night, and trying to vote on it tonight. I, I'm very comfortable, I was two months ago, we vote on this one. Now, I guess you've called a amendment, or suggested amendment, and you've seconded, so I don't know if we call a vote, Mr. Gorm, on this?
How about listening to the people?
The appropriate thing to do at this point, when the discussion is complete, in the estimation of the council, is to vote on the amendment.
This is what I don't like, why can't we just, okay, so, just because, obviously, I don't think I got an answer. Are we expecting Citron Cooperman to tell us how to run the sewer subcommittee? I mean, those are experts, we're waiting for them to tell us when they do this report, which is not in audit.
McGee to tell, yes.
Procedure.
I'd have to go look at the proposal, I believe the only thing they're doing is looking at the sewer subcommittee minutes to look at the history of the program, and what decisions or recommendations were made by the sewer.
So they're not going to come back to us with any suggestions for the, for the, how we are going to organize and run the committee?
Well, one of the things, again, I'd have to look at the proposal, it doesn't sound familiar, but if the council would like to add that on as a task for the firm, they can look at that and make those recommendations.
I think you can, you know, it's hard to predict what you're going to learn from a report that hasn't been prepared yet, but I don't, even if they didn't recommend changing the sewer subcommittee, I think it's fair to say that some of the recommendations that Councilmember Bacon has made in her amendment may very well be, come to fruition as a result of what we read in that report, but I, I mean, really, I don't know what that report is going to say. I have some ideas, but, you know, it's just impossible to surmise at this point what the report's going to say.
Well, I guess my question is, are they specifically tasked?
With reforming the committee?
Reforming, or, okay, so then I think it's up to us to reform what isn't working.
Right. Light on, this is the whipping on me!
I'm not, I'm not saying that that, I'm not suggesting that couldn't be done, I'm just clarifying, because the question was asked, that could be done as a result of the report, but until you have the report, you don't know that. There may be suggestions that are even better, that are, that are apparent after you read the report, I don't know, but it's just my observation.
And then pass the amendments, and then if additional have to be added, then we go forward from there, but obviously, what we have now. go forward from there, but obviously, what we have now and the makeup of that sewer subcommittee is not working.
Nope. That's right. That's right, only one person up here, doesn't want to move it.
Yeah, any more discussion?
How about listening to the people?
What, stuff was-
On the amendments, uh-
I guess not.
If not, um-
John, three to two.
Again, my, my, my point is, wait for the twice to come back, and then make the changes as we go down the line.
Yeah, well, you don't want to get on me, shut up.
I don't want to ask anybody to leave.
I'm not talking to you, Ophia.
No, I understand, but I-
She was talking to me, but I have to be quiet.
I, I am just saying, I don't want to ask anybody to, to leave, all I'm saying is that discussion, my point, and I think I've made it, you obviously, Mrs. Bacon and Mrs. Carlson have made your point, Mr. McGee, you made your point, Mr. LaBosse and Ariel, I suppose, vote, and, uh, I, I think we do need changes, we need changes, but to change it right now, tonight, would be premature, to make all these full-time directors part of it, and to change it everything, I'd rather do what we know is current, and then we change it as we go, not tonight, not because two people said so, and then some people clapping.
Okay, if you don't want to change the directors, at least change the responsibilities so they have.
Call a vote tonight on your vote, and that's it, that's my opinion, it's been, we've waited three months, and we specifically waited-
We just got it last town meeting.
We've waited three weeks for any additions from what we've passed table twice, which is a couple of meetings, I'm not going to discuss it, all right, I want to decide, personally.
You always decide, Glenn, and that's why my, my district has problems, because you guys won't listen.
That's it. All right, I guess you call the vote, and a second, um, all in favor of all the amendments?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, let's go back to the one that was proposed a couple of months ago, written up as requested by our town solicitor, uh, well, I'll go back to our original motion then, and town manager desired, uh, made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, and again, we welcome the future changes as it's recommended, and as we come. Very good, next on the agenda, F2, the final hurrah. Colonel, you want to speak on this, or is it, who speaks on this, Mr. Waters?
So, the resolution that is included in the packet is for, uh, accepting the hazard mitigation plan, uh, and the Colonel can speak to more about the process and why the resolution's come forward.
Okay, I know we've discussed it, we've heard it, uh, regarding this, uh, that's brought before us on the resolution, Colonel, go ahead.
So, basically FEMA has approved this plant, all the, the only step that's left is for council to approve it, and then we send back to FEMA with the council resolution for final adoption, and basically, it just means that we can, you know, we can apply for hazard mitigation grants.
Okay, so there's no real cost, regarding it, we can apply for grants?
No, the, the hazard mitigation plan's a living document, we continue to obtain it, and, uh, we have to go back in five years and get it approved again.
And Colonel, just for clarification, this is just for, uh, man-made hazards, not natural disasters, correct?
No, well, it's mitigation processes to prevent, uh, you know, when disaster happens to prevent things from being worse than they are, so, we looked at all, we read through the documents, and-
Okay, any council people with questions?
Yeah, um, sorry, Colonel, I have a, my hazard, my hazard management, thank you. But I haven't, this was, um, May of seventeen, do we have an updated one? I mean, is this, is this book been redone?
They made, uh, we've met with Carissa and Ray, so they made the edits, the changes to those edits, and they followed those, with the changes, so after the last document you've seen, there's really been no changes other than the changes you asked for.
So, is this going to be a public document, that if we wanted copies, or anybody out there wanted a copy?
Yeah, we will hang it on, on the websites, as soon as it's, it's ready and approved, at least in my view of priority, but FEMA, Rhode Island EMA has approved it, FEMA, Region One, Boston has approved it.
Okay, so, because I have, um, it needs to be submitted to FEMA by the, the twenty-eighth of February, so it's ready to go to FEMA?
It's ready to go.
Okay, great.
It's been approved by FEMA.
So, how did Rema, how did they, they look at it? Did they have any changes?
Not really, it was mostly, um, spelling and things like that, it wasn't anything significant to the document, so we made those changes as well, and we got it turned around quick and sent to FEMA.
Okay, all right, so, looks like it's ready to go, and once, how long does it take for FEMA to approve this and get it back?
I think as soon as we get it to them, it's really not, they're not going to really look at it again, because FEMA, like I said, in Boston, Region One, are approved of that, so it's really just, it's got to be packaged with the council approval, that's it.
Great, and then we can get a hard copy of it, just so, terrific, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Colonel, any other questions to the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I think Mr. McGee did, or it was two, two, uh, first, two at the same time.
Two at the same time.
Oh, thank you, did not hear it.
Okay, uh, now, I guess, uh, is this correct, we adjourn before we discuss the budget calendar, is it?
Does budget calendar still have that sort of information?
Okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we have the budget calendar for information. Good night, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.